Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening at our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the row?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Chetum?
Here.
Lorick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Vlad?
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you remain standing for the invocation, which will be observed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number Three as a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes of the following meetings. City Council Work Session Meeting December of December 10, 2020, and Clarification and Regular City Council Meetings of February 4, 2021. B. Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for January 2021 showing cash and investments as of January 31, 2020. Jim, good evening. How are you doing?
Fine. Would you like me to give the report now?
Please.
Okay. So, the report that is before you for consideration tonight is a report of cash through January 31, 2021. The total amount of cash on hand in the governmental funds is $87,553,000. And we have a change in cash received from operations in all funds of $19,917,797. I have just a little bit to say about our receipts during the month of January, and typically January is a good month for revenues, probably, I think it may be the biggest month that we have for revenues. And we have several items in comparison to January of 2020 that represent significant changes, but in total, about $3.8 million more in revenue for January of 2021 versus January of 2020. Most of what comprises that difference is about $2.8 million that we received from Vannock County for property taxes, plus the amount that we received from the state of Idaho for the CARES Act grant. And those two, as I just said, comprise about $2.8 million more this year in January as compared to last year in January. We were a little bit lower in utility billing service charges. Last year, we had about $2.1 million received in utility billing charges for the month of January, and this year, we're just under $2 million. That's a change of about $117,000. The Idaho State Sales Tax Revenue Sharing Amount that we received in the current year, January, was $1,168,000. Last year was about $605,000, so that's an increase of about $563,000 between the two years. And we had an increase in our building fees and permits fee, building and permit fees of about $133,000 between January of last year and January of this year. That's nice to see that, that we've had that increase in building fees and permits. That also represents a little bit of a workload consideration for that department, so they've been very busy. And our total disbursements for the month of January 2021 as compared to January 2020 were less by about $950,000. So, January net receipts versus January 2021 net receipts as compared to January 2020 net receipts, which is the difference between receipts and disbursements, about $4.8 million better in January of 2021 versus January of 2020. Those numbers aren't necessarily on the report that you have before you, but I'm going to try to make those available for future months. And I'll do my best to make sure that we only carry, continue to carry funds on our balance sheet that we're absolutely legally required to do. If there are some funds that can be closed, I'll take care of that as well. All told, for both our trust funds and our general operating funds, we have $91,688,000 approximately in cash as of January 31, 2021. We had approximately $73.5 million same time last year. And that's the extent of my report, Mayor. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Yes.
You may not know, Jim, but this decrease in utility billing service charges, was there a comparable increase in delinquency?
And, I'm sorry.
In delinquency through utility billing charges?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head, but I can find that out and get back.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Super. Thank you, Jim. We'll move to C. Council Decision. The Ridges at Trail Creek Final Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the final plat for the Ridges at Trail Creek, which subdivides approximately 30.22 acres of land into 16 lots, subject to conditions. Access will be provided from the intersections of Gaethje Drive and Foothill Boulevard. D. Council Decision Annexating Approximately 5.97 Acres of Land Located at 6715 South Fifth Avenue. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the annexation of a parcel of land comprised of approximately 5.97 acres owned by Pocatello Land and Cattle LLC. Parcel is located at 6715 South Fifth Avenue and will be zoned Light Industrial LI with a comprehensive map plan designated of employment.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Chetum.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Agenda Item Number Three, our Consent Agenda Items A through D.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Chetum. I got it. I got it right here. Motion by, it's been a long day. Motion by Chetum and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the row?
Chetum?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On February 20, we would like to wish Councilwoman Chris Stevens a happy birthday.
And I feel slighted because our council president did not bring a birthday hat to wear.
I think that you kept it. I like it.
Except it looks a little bit like a duck's cap.
Right. Happy birthday across the.
The birthday hat or the duck's cap.
The birthday hat. The birthday hat. We want to wish you a merry, or a happy birthday.
Thank you.
That's a great thing. On March 4, at 5:30 PM will be a City Council Clarification Meeting. At March 4, 6 PM will be a regular City Council Meeting. March 11 will be, 9 AM will be a City Council Work Session. Other events, Pocatello Promise of Tomorrow, Mayoral Scholarship for Students Program Applications are due February 26. I cannot stress enough, if somebody knows a senior that is looking for a scholarship, please fill out an application. If it comes on the 27th, it will not be considered, so please get that in by the 26th.
Mr. Mayor, I think you made a really important point around that scholarship during the clarification meeting that I would love it if you would repeat that.
So, thank you for that. We, this scholarship is titled exactly the way we like it, Pocatello's Promise of Tomorrow, and we are looking for students that aren't necessarily getting scholarships, but students that are in need of scholarships. The people, the students that are struggling, whether or not they're going to go or not, and we would really appreciate to see those students. You don't have to have straight A's. We're not looking for straight A's. We're looking for a desire to go to school and a need for a couple thousand dollars over the next couple of years to do so. So, please, if you know anybody, encourage anybody and everybody right now. I'll just take this point of privilege. Last year, we gave five scholarships away, and it's great. And some of the stories, the letters that I've received thanking, these are students who would not have gone without, and that's exactly what we're looking for. So, please, please, I encourage you to do whatever we can to make that happen. All right. Then a reminder, face coverings are required when individuals are in public places within the city of Pocatello. As a reminder, keep sidewalks clear of snow and ice. When cleaning sidewalks and driveways of snow, please do not throw the snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Five, Solicitor Peddler License Denial Appeal. Brassington. Kayden Brassington will be present to appeal a decision of Pocatello Police Department staff which denied Kayden solicitor's license. Kayden, oh, staff.
Do I need to?
Tori, yes.
Explain the reason?
Please do, yes.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Tori Eldridge of the Pocatello Police Licensing. After careful consideration, it is the decision of the Pocatello Police Department to deny Kayden Brassington on application for a solicitor's license. Due to charges of theft by embezzlement that occurred in Missoula, he was also charged with possessing intoxicating substance in 2019. Both are reasons for denial per city code. He also failed to put the information on his application.
Okay. Any questions for Tori before she sits down? Okay, thank you.
So, I guess one left.
Tori, I guess we have one.
He did not divulge these two things on an application?
No.
Okay.
Did you have any conversation with him around that omission at all?
No, I talked, I called him when, to talk to him about it being denied and what his options were.
Okay, thank you. Kayden, are you here? Could you come on up here, please?
So, just to explain myself with those charges.
Would you speak up just a little?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Just to explain myself with those charges, that was about a year ago, and basically, I was in a very tough spot. I was homeless and made some very bad choices with trying to get money to get home. I had a drug problem, and since January 9 of 2020, I've been sober and chucked myself into a treatment center called Brickhouse Recovery in Idaho Falls, also into a sober living house with a bunch of other recovering addicts who had had a very positive impact on me. And basically, got my own place, got a job, got this job specifically called DeBella where I applied for the permit and was denied. And this job is basically everything to me right now, to keep my apartment, to pay the bills, you know, get food. I have my family back. There are so many different things that I could have done in the past to change my ways beforehand, afterhand, and what is done is done, and I can't do anything to change that, but I am definitely bettering myself, so.
Okay. Questions for Kayden? I've got Linda and then Roger.
Right out of my.
Okay, I've got Roger, and then we'll go back to Linda.
Kayden, if the application asks you to divulge your history, why didn't you?
I honestly must have missed that because I did it really quick in the morning before work, like in the office, and we had to get out and solicit, so we just, I honestly don't even remember seeing anything on there. It's no excuse, but I must have missed it.
That actually was my question.
That was your question?
Yes.
And what have you learned from that portion of this experience?
Nothing comes easy, and nothing worth living for is attainable, just like that.
And when your future is at stake and you have paperwork in front of you, do you have any learning takeaway from doing things quickly?
Yeah, definitely don't, definitely don't rush anything. When I was applying for my apartment, just for example, I had to put down that I had misdemeanors, so, and that was urged as well to make sure that that's put down, so.
So, you did put that down when you applied for your apartment?
Yes.
What were you doing before this job?
Before this job, I was working at Little Caesar's.
Pardon?
I was working at Little Caesar's, and this was back in 2020 around October. And then I got a job offer to do door-to-door sales, and it's been the biggest, probably the biggest change in my life and the best job, quality of job I've ever had, meeting new people, talking to people face-to-face, et cetera, et cetera.
Other questions, Council? Okay.
I have one question, not for Kayden.
Tori?
Yeah, I think it would be for Tori. I was just thinking, you know, because I haven't done this kind of life, like you were saying earlier, only with childcare, but as far as our code, is it the same time requirement, like when they have something on there, how many years?
Five years.
Five years.
Five, five years.
Okay.
Okay, I have Councilwoman Stevens and Councilwoman Ortega.
Are you going to be handling any credit card information, cash, checks, any, any financial, anything in this proposed job?
No. So, I am specifically an appointment setter for my job. I'm not a sales representative, so I will not be giving quotes or estimates or taking down any information as such. So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortega?
Well, I don't really have another question. I'm just, I just wanted to make a statement.
Okay.
So, I think this is an opportunity for us to give someone a chance at a real job, at a good job, and to not punish what is essentially a child for an undue period of time. I'm not saying that anything that he, that stealing money was right, obviously, that's never right, but I can also understand if someone is homeless and desperate, how they may not make the best choice. As far as I'm concerned, having, being in possession of illicit drugs doesn't, I mean, he wasn't, were you selling drugs, Lee? No. Selling, I mean, there's a little big difference between having something on you as an addict and selling and trafficking in the community. So, I think that this is an opportunity to keep somebody from going back to that path. If we deny this young man this license, you know, what job is he going to be able to get? And, and, and then he's probably going to fall into a desperate situation where he's going to want to make a less-than stellar choice, and then we're just going to be feeding him right back into that cycle. And I just think that, especially at this young age, I think that he deserves a chance to do this job. He's not handling any money, he's not, doesn't have any violence in his history, no convictions for violence or anything like that. I just don't see where it's an issue.
Mr. Mayor, I think if we grant this license tonight, we're giving this young man the opportunity, we're telling our citizens this man can come into their home because we've approved him to go door-to-door. And I think with the recent history, I think it hasn't been long enough to grant that permission.
So, he comes into your house to talk to you about making an appointment, to talk to somebody about aluminum siding, are you just going to let him roam around your house willy-nilly? I mean, what, what, what are you thinking he's going to do to somebody?
I think, I think we're giving the opportunity, well, you know, I guess this is television drama perhaps, but I think we're giving him an opportunity to get past the front door.
And?
And I don't think that's the right thing for the City Council to do with someone who has a criminal history and recent past. So.
Council, just one second, please. Are there any more questions for Kayden? We can have him sit down. Why don't you go ahead and take your seat for a minute, and they'll have a discussion. Do you have one more, anything else to say?
Yeah, like two things. So, just with that being said, I am, one, not able or allowed ever to go into anyone's house with this job. We have supervisors that walk with us that are ensuring that we do not do that. It is actually illegal right now because of COVID. Also, with that being said, with my mis, being given my misdemeanors, I have just received paperwork to get them sealed, and I'm filling, and I have filled it out and mailed it to them in Montana where I was received, where I received the misdemeanors, and they will be sealed as well.
Okay.
So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Can I have more?
So, Tori, and then I don't know if this conversation's done yet, but.
Yeah, I just.
Councilman Bray.
Tori, if, if he commits a crime or is charged with a crime, does that, do you get notified and do we pull his license?
If it's pertaining to his license, then I do.
So, if it's a drug-related arrest or if it's any kind of financial arrest?
Or violence against another person?
I don't know specifically if I would get notified. I will read the shift synopsis in the morning to see if anyone that is licensed is on that. I don't know if officers are aware of, they need to notify me if something happens. I think that's probably.
Is, could the chief answer how that process works?
Chief, do you have a process?
Now you see him, now you don't.
Chief Roger Shai, Pocatello Police Department. Yeah, we do have a process, and that, like Tori just said, through our shift synopsis. So, usually when somebody's arrested for something, it gets disseminated through our shift synopsis. We can also flag that name in our Spillman computer system so that if that person were to be charged, it could, it could show up as an alert on our Spillman computer system. So, that's how we would manage that.
So, there is an alert that could be generated?
We could put on, it on his name file.
Correct. We could, we could attach it to his name. Everybody that's in our system has what's called an involvement, a name involvement, and we could attach it to the name involvement, so.
Okay. Okay.
Back to our debate.
Yep, back to the debate.
I just want to say that I would really like to see this council be a little less judgmental and punitive. We've not walked in a lot of these people's shoes, you know? And, and I've done things that I'm not proud of in my life, I just didn't get caught. But I just don't believe if someone, he was convicted of his misdemeanor, whatever the penalty was, the penalty was, now it's on his record. I mean, what, what happened to the concept of you pay your debt to society and you, you get a chance to be a productive citizen? That means a job, an apartment? It doesn't, it doesn't mean send him out on the street with a sign that says, you know, homeless need help. I would rather see him working and, and improving his situation rather than being a part of the system or one of the many peddlers who don't have a license, who are on the corners of our city streets begging for money.
Councilwoman Stevens?
I think the other thing, if I was hearing correctly, is that he is, has put himself in, or is required, I'm not sure which, to be in some circumstances that provide ongoing support and awareness around his, his particular issues. I mean, I believe he said his, and I just couldn't hear completely, but it sounded to me as though he's part of either a supportive living situation or some kind of group support around, particularly around his addiction. And, and I think that makes a difference. I mean, I think it's one thing if a, if an addict is just on their own, isolated, versus being in a situation where there's positive support and at the same time, a sense that somebody is looking over your shoulder at, at your behavior. I think that makes a big difference, and I think that's part of what we need to consider.
So, yes.
I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, these situations are always so difficult because we're kind of torn, you know? We want to have compassion, we want to give somebody a chance, but we also have laws and codes that we're supposed to follow. And so, we're kind of in a really difficult situation, and it's always hard to know, you know, what we, not just what to do, but what we can do and what is then fair because we have to treat all people the same, you know, and, and be even-handed. So, the one thing I wanted to say before we vote on this is that I commend you, Kayden, for everything that you're doing to turn your life around. And no matter which way this decision goes, I would just urge you to, to keep, keep doing that and keep going in the right direction because you've really done a good job on turning yourself around, and, and don't, don't give up on that. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
I have a question for Tori, if I may. Tori, the, how big or how long is this application for this position? Is it a 15-page application? Is it one page? Is it?
For the license?
For the license.
I have it right here. So, it's three pages.
So, three pages, and within that three pages, is the question of any misdemeanors or crimes committed, is it hidden or is it very clear?
No, it's on the second page at the very top.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Are we still just discussing?
We don't have a motion at all. We're just discussing.
Okay.
Council President Adamson.
Yeah, so, Kayden, I feel really sad to have this situation. Like everyone has said, this is very difficult for us because we want what's best for you, and we, we're glad to see that you're turning things around and that you're making some good decisions. The unfortunate thing, I guess, for your situation in this case is that, you know, when I took the oath of office for City Council, I promised to uphold the laws of the city of Pocatello. And so, this is something that is in our laws, that if you, if you have this, you can't have a license. And so, while I know that's disappointing and is not what you'd like to hear, that is what our law says. And I know the police department doesn't make that decision lightly. They don't just, you know, draw yes or no out of the hat. It's gone over in great detail, and they put a lot of time and effort into it. So, with that, I move that we uphold the decision of the police department staff and deny the license.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by. Okay, we have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Cheetham. Wendy, could you please call her on?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Bray?
Boy, I'm torn.
It's a harder one.
We're going to enforce the laws.
It's a harder one.
It's harder than the lobby. That's a law too.
I'm going to say no.
Lorik?
This is really, really hard. I think, I mean, my, my first feeling is always to follow the law. But in this case, since you are not going into houses, since you are not handling money, and that's not part of your job, and you've done a lot to turn yourself around, I'm going to take a chance here, and I'm going to vote no.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Kayden. You might just visit with Tori to just follow up with everything, make sure you have everything taken care of and followed through. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number six as a public hearing.
We can move on. We have a vote not to approve. To uphold that, which was failed, we don't have it approved.
That's true. Never mind. Everybody stands. Stand still for a minute. Sorry.
I move that we approve a solicitor peddler license for Kayden Grassington.
Second.
So we have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call her on?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
No.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
No.
And Lorik?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Due to what I just said a few minutes ago. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number six as a public hearing, annexation of 8.65 acres near the east end of Vista Drive. This time has been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Bill Isley of B Street Investments LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to annex end zone approximately 8.65 acres of land near the east end of Vista Drive. The requests, the requested zoning for the property is residential low-density RL with the, with a concurrent comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential R. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request following a previous public hearing. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Following the public hearing, council may wish to approve the annexation and authorize the staff to prepare an ordinance for council's consideration at a future city council meeting. I declare the public hearing open. Councilman Bray?
I just need to say that I talked to Bill before I was back on the council, I think, maybe not, about this project. And I just need to disclose that. I don't think it has any influence over the course it's taken to this point. And I don't feel like I need to recuse myself because of that conversation.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Bill?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I would like you to, in your packet, if you would go to this, which is Attachment B, the map, it will show really what we're talking about here in all respects. The 7.56 acre portion was already annexed. It's clearly noted on that map. And then there's a little crosshatch piece. That's the 8.65 acre portion. The reason that I'm annexing that piece now is the first phase of this development is on a side hill, and it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to grade that phase without getting on the ground next to it. So I went to the people that I have the option from for the 90 acres and bought the next 11 acres. But we're only annexing 8.65 because the rest of it was already in the city from previous. And so that's the difference in the numbers. But the main reason I wanted you to look at this map is you can see Center Street, where it ends, and you can see Vista where it ends, and you can just visualize how Center Street is going to go across and attach to Vista as it comes up. And that will complete the loop to where you have two ways in and out of the entire east bench of Pocatello. It's been on the drawing board since 1973. It will be a reality in 2000 and, give me an extra year, but '24. It, it's coming, and we will get it done. Now then, to the matters at hand. There are the six questions that you always ask when you're going to annex. The CDC approved the annexation request unanimously, and they wrote their findings of fact. I can't say it any better than what they said unless you want me just to repeat it again. Staff's in favor of it. The only thing that I wanted to speak about different was it's not a mistake, but it may be a tiny little misunderstanding. I've talked to the fire department, the head of the fire department, fire chief, and explained it to him. I don't own the ground that goes all the way to Center Street. I have it under an option to purchase. I wouldn't purchase if I couldn't get the plan or the master plan for that whole area approved. There'd be no sense. I'd hold it for the next 50 years like Empire has. So, and that's a long time for me, actually, when I think about it.
You know, if that's an insurance policy.
That would take a while. I have no doubt that the master plan that is being drafted now and will be presented to the city in the next four to six weeks, we will work ourselves through the issues, the development issues, and that it will be approved, and that we will get this done. It's very important to me personally to make this connection and to develop that section of Pocatello. But it won't be done in two years. It probably will be done in three. What I've made a commitment to is that I will punch Center Street through before I do any of the side streets. So I will get that through as fast as it can be developed in, in that regard. And I expect this development to take eight years to 10. It will be approximately 125 single-family residences of houses and townhouses that will develop this area. There's a sensitive zone up here for winter deer rate. So what we do is whatever the zone requirement is for minimum size, you double that. Well, the last thing I want to see on the, on that area, I lived there. I've lived there for 20 years in three different houses and developed Tuscany Hills BUD, is I don't want to see big lots with fences around them. That defeats the purpose. I want to see clustered housing, townhouses, no fences at all on the western side of the hill, which we're looking up towards, and very few fences up there. You leave all of the area open, and you have your housing clustered, which allows you then to take and have 40 or 50 of the 80 acres undisturbed. So that's the approach that I will take in developing this, what I consider a very important part of Pocatello. We've got 41 houses left in Pocatello, single-family for sale. Normally, we have 300. I don't have any in Valley of the Trees. I've actually got four foundations that haven't been put in yet, but the houses on those foundations that haven't been put in are already sold. It's sold out. It will be finished in September. I'd like our first phase up there to start in August or September of this year. If you want me to go into any details on the six, I can, but I'd just be here to answer your questions.
I think tonight is just about the annexation itself. It's not about the development or any of that, and so...
Absolutely agree.
Any questions for Bill in regards to the annexation? All right, Super, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Steph?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As noted, Bill Isley of B Street Investment LLC, represented by RMS, Army S, has submitted an application to annex end zone 8.65 acres, more or less, of land located east and southeast of the recently annexed 7.56 acre land at the east end of Vista Drive. The annexation request is in statutory compliance with Idaho State Code Section 50-222, 3.8i as a category A annexation, which allows annexation to take place wherein all private landowners have consented to annexation. The property lies within the adopted area city impact and is contiguous to the city of Pocatello limits. The applicant, Bill Isley of B Street Investments LLC, is the property owner. The proposed zoning of residential low-density results in a transition from residential medium-density to the east and residential estate to the south. This designation requires a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet for single-family homes and 12,000 square feet for townhomes and duplexes. Properties zoned with the RE designation typically entails steeper terrain. In this case, the 8.65 acre, acres, topography varies from 4% to 12% grade. The proposed residential density is compatible with the adjacent residential uses to the east and south. Following a public hearing on January 7th of 2021, the public, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the application, finding that the request does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.110, with the eight conditions as outlined in their findings of fact. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Matt, councilman? Matt, have you received any other correspondence that we have not seen?
I have not, Mayor.
Adam Clark, have you had any in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. We'd look for any testimony uncommitted to the application. We would look for any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then, it doesn't sound like, Bill, there's any reason for you to rebut if you would like to say anything else. But if not, then I'm just going to go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. Council, these items before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Adamson.
I move to approve the annexation and authorize staff to bring an ordinance forward at a future meeting for us to consider.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Cheetham.
Is that subject, no, sorry. Yeah. Is that subject to the recommendations?
Yes.
I thought that I heard, heard that.
I, I can't hear, not in the mass blocks.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, let's blame it on that.
Yeah. Okay, then. We have a motion by President Adamson, a second by Cheetham. Wendy, could you please call her on?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We will move to agenda item number seven as Water Department Equipment Bid. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for a 4-1 18-ton boom truck to Rush Truck Center, who submitted the low-responsive bid in the amount of $210,660, and authorize the mayor's signature on all appropriate documents subject to legal department review. Funds for the expense are available in the fiscal year 2021 Water Department budget. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we declare that we have, are taking the low-responsive bid and awarding that bid to Rush Truck Center for the purchase of the Water Department equipment.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens.
Is this going to be a 2021 or 2022? Does anybody know?
Justin, I think, would know. Is it going to be a 2021 or 2022 vehicle?
Yeah, it's a 2021.
2021. Thank you, Justin. So we have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call her on?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, piggyback bid with Peterbilt Motor Company Water Pollution Control, WPC. Council may wish to accept a piggyback bid on Sourcewell Contract Number 060920-PMC with Peterbilt Motor Company for the purchase of one new Peterbilt Model 567 tractor, cab, and chassis in the amount of $132,960, and authorize the mayor's signature on all appropriate documents subject to legal department review. Funds for these, for the expenses are available in fiscal year 2021 WPC budget. Councilwoman Lorik?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number eight, the piggyback bid with Peterbilt Motor Company for the purchase of a new tractor, cab, and chassis as outlined here, and authorize the mayor's signature on all appropriate documents subject to legal department review. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lorik and a second by Stevens.
Same question.
Okay, we have another question.
21 or 22?
This'll be a 2021.
Okay. Wendy, could you please call her on?
Lorik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, resolution lease agreement, Pocatello Regional Airport. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve and authorize the mayor's to sign lease agreement by resolution between the city and Bruce Beard for a hangar at Pocatello Regional Airport. The hangar is approximately 1,760 square feet and is to be used for the purpose of aircraft storage. The purp- the proposed term is a five-years and rental rate is $267.91 per month, increased annually at least by the amount of the CPI increase for the previous 12-month period.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheetham?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of agenda item number nine, the resolution and lease agreement at the Pocatello Regional Airport to lease a hangar to Bruce Beard.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Lorik. Wendy, could you please call her on?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
I appreciate Councilwoman Lorik jumping on that one. It scared me a little bit.
I wasn't sure that, that the motion was...
I can appreciate it. Thank you. Agenda item 10, Airport Improvement Program, API, Grant Application and Professional Services Agreement, Pocatello Regional Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign all pertinent documents pertaining to the following. A, a grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, under the Airport Improvement Program in the amount of $1,422,187. The projects funded under this grant, under the grant will be purcha- will be the purchase of a piece of snow removal equipment, an ARF foam testing system, and an airport master plan, including a pavement management plan, and if the grant is approved, authorize acceptance of the grant, and B, approve a professional services agreement between the city and TO engineers for design, bidding, and purchase of this year's AIP non-planning, non-planning projects, which include acquisition of a multiple, multi-tool piece of snow removal equipment and an ARF foam testing system with engineering fees in the amount not to exceed $44,640.97. All projects under the grant include engineering fees, are eligible for 93.75% reimbursement from the FAA, with the remaining 6.25% funded using budgeted airport passenger facility charge funds. These projects are contingent upon grant award. Councilwoman Ortega?
Can I just say that I move to appro-
Can I just say that I moved to approve Agenda Item Number 10, as it is written, as you just read it? With all the legal that makes her happy and, okay.
Second?
Yes.
Can I have that discussion?
You can, sure, why not?
Wouldn't it be okay for us to just assume somehow that if legal needs to review, they will review instead of having it in there? Well, you know, I mean, if we just passed a resolution that every item that needs legal review has to be reviewed, then I don't think we'd have to say it every time.
You can do that. You definitely don't have to say it in the motion every time. I like having it in the agenda item. So Councilwoman Ortega's, uh, motion was perfect.
Okay.
I moved to approve Agenda Item 10 as written. It's perfectly appropriate.
Oh.
So, but that doesn't mean that's, that's all you have. Or, that doesn't mean that you have to only say that. You can say more in the motion.
But that's good enough.
But we can certainly have a discussion about the legal review process. And sometimes it's in there because we actually haven't seen it yet. Um, and other times, most of the time, we've already seen it, approved it, and authorized.
I'm just thinking that we could, we could do one action where anytime we're doing something like this, there's a legal review set in most.
But even if we, all we have to say is move to approve as written.
That, and it will be in here anyway. The legal review's gonna be in there, so.
Just, it just provides an extra layer of addition for the city. Yeah, the, the motions can be as simple as that or as complicated as rereading the entire.
We could write an ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ortega and a second by Cheetum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes. What just happened? Wait, what just happened?
Hold on, she's reading the order you said, I should.
I said Cheetum. So, a motion by Ortega, second by?
Stevens.
By Cheetum.
Cheetum?
Cheetum seconded it and Stevens seconded after him.
Oh. Turn me off for a second.
It's okay.
Okay.
That's why I said yes.
What just happened?
Oh, redo.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna say right now, it's been a long day for us. Everybody watching, please just know that it has been a long day for the council and I. Agenda Item 11, 2020 Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness Grant Application, Fire Department. Council may wish to approve a grant application for the 2020 Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness, HMEP Grant. And if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and approve the mayor's signature on all applicable documents. Grant funds would be for four training opportunities, opportunity projects with the total amount of $16,745. Grant funds would cover $13,396 of the cost and requires a 20% city match in the amount of $3,349. Funds for the city match are available, available in the fiscal year 2021 Fire Department Budget. Uh, go ahead, Ly, Lurik.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 11, the 2020 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant Application, as outlined, um, in the agenda and approve the mayor's signature on all applicable documents.
Second.
Thank you. And two hands up at the same time, so, yes.
I, I just wanted to, um, thank the, the chief for finding the match funds, um, within the department budget. That was something that we asked, probably not his, obviously wasn't his, his preferred way of moving forward, but he graciously did that and I think it's worth noting.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Lurik and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, An Ordinance Repealing Ordinance Number 3061, Establishing Standards for Face Coverings for Individuals When They Are in Public Places. Counsel, how do you wish this item, this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, uh, Cheetum?
Mr. Mayor, I do the ordinance Agenda Item Number 12, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and then only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetum and a second by Adamson. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. And council is asked to have a little bit of discussion before we read the ordinance. And so, Councilman Bray?
I think we're only at the stage right now of where we should have instituted this ordinance in the first place. We're just barely touching sometimes into the yellow zone. We're in the red zones most of the time still. I think that, uh, there are too many uncertainties that go with this virus. There, we're noting that there are mutations occurring. We have noted today that there are interruptions in the vaccines being distributed. We're, uh, hearing of changes in this virus that are affecting young children now more severely than they ever have. And I just think that it's time for us to just not move too quickly. I think we're on the verge, the verge of victory, but we're at, we're kinda like F Troop. We're trying to retreat into victory. I, I, I think we need to move forward with this mask mandate. And if we want to follow the false narrative, and I'm calling it a false narrative, based on those who do not want to wear masks is setting the precedence we should follow, then why are we not following that logic on everything else? I can set at a stop sign and I watch people roll through it or not stop at all. Should we take down that stop sign? But say, we're gonna follow it, but everybody else doesn't have to? Or should we go to a place where the speed limit is and many of the cars are exceeding that speed limit? And say, hey, everybody's ignoring the rule, let's take it down. But we ourselves will follow appropriate speeds. But because many people are not doing it, we should, we should just take it down. We should rescind the law we've set in place. Are we willing to, um, move in terms of other safety issues? Where we want to remove other rules we have established to help in safety measure? Do we want to say not enough people comply with our weed ordinances? So we shouldn't have a weed ordinance? Are we gonna say that too many people are not complying with hooking up to our sewer system? So we shouldn't have a rule that says hook up to our sewer system? Should we say, oh, if you want to hook up to your own source of water at your neighbor, go ahead. If we get enough people, we won't have that ordinance. What happens if we follow that logical path? And somebody comes to us and says, why do I have to wear clothes? It's just a small stretch. Some people are saying they don't need to wear a mask. What happens when somebody says, I don't need to wear clothes? Are we gonna rescind the decency ordinance we have there? Therefore, I'm not willing to say that we should rescind this ordinance. I think we need to keep it in place. I, I think that we have a momentum behind us. I think that we have a lot of things in our favor, but not everything's in our favor. We're on the verge of winter being over in about six weeks or less. There are all kinds of things that are before us, but we want to retreat. And I'm not gonna vote to retreat.
Okay, any other, uh, Rick and then Linda?
You know, when this ordinance was put in place, in fact, when this whole crisis started, it was intended as a temporary measure that we were told would protect the healthcare system's ability to provide medical care. Yesterday, Portland Medical Center started allowing visitors back in the hospital because their emergency room, their, not ICU emergency room, ICU has zero patients. There's nobody intimated, there's nobody in that hospital. There is plenty of medical care available if we do get another instance. Yesterday, I heard that they are detecting the new variant strains of COVID in the sewer system in Meridian. It's already there, but there's been no spike in cases of COVID available. If you compare our infection rate and death rate, even after the mask ordinance, to the counties who never had one or the communities that never had one, it's exactly the same. We peaked in early December. We've been on a steady decline. We're down about 40% from where we were at the peak. This thing has run its course. There really isn't, there really isn't a reason to continue this at this point. I talked to merchants downtown over the weekend. In, in almost every case, not every case, but in most cases, they will comply if they have to. They don't like it. They don't like what is during their customers and they'd like to see it done away with. I think it's time this council helped to stop the fear that is erupting across our country over this virus. That's what it is. There's a great fear that is way beyond reality of what's happening in our country. I think we need to show some courage, show some leadership, and repeal this ordinance.
Councilwoman Lurik?
And I wanted to address the idea of fear because I can, just speaking for myself, I'm not making a decision out of fear. To me, it is about our duty to protect the public and it's not because I'm afraid and I'm not cowering with my house and, you know. To me, it's a simple thing to wear a mask and that's the thing that allows us to keep things open and to keep going out. Um, and, you know, to keep our economy strong and keep our businesses open. So, I think it's a small thing that we can do and, and I don't make the decision I make out of fear. So I just wanted to be very clear. If, if looking at science, deferring to the experts, you mentioned the hospital. We got a letter from the hospital, from the board, from the CEO, asking us to keep this in place. So, the medical community is almost 100% unanimous on asking us to keep this in place. We got a letter from the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce asking us to keep this in place. So, from the business side, and I've heard from many business owners who said that having this ordinance made it a lot easier for them because we can sort of take the burden off of them just by making it across the board. It didn't make them sort of, put them in a difficult position of having to require them individually. So, uh, I think it's too early. I think we need to stay the course. I was on the call, um, maybe you were too, with the governor, uh, with his office and his, um, people in charge of the vaccine distribution yesterday. And we're not even at 10% vaccination for our state yet. So we're beginning that process. They're upping the quantity. They finally fought to up our allotment from the federal government because we were really low and there wasn't enough for the people that wanted it. That is now being bumped up. And so, hopefully that will speed the process a little bit more and those who wanna get vaccinated can get vaccinated. But I think we need to be further into that process. You know, I personally have had big friends that have been very sick. I personally have lost friends to this virus. So, um, I don't think we should underestimate the seriousness of it. Uh, I know personally, I don't wanna get it because I don't know what my reaction would be. So, I don't think it's something to take lightly, but I also am not making my decision out of fear. And, and I just really, um, want to be clear about that. I think this is our duty to, uh, protect public health and public safety. That's, that's part of what our job is. This is not a fun thing that we're going through. Nobody wants to wear these things. But we're all in this boat and we kinda have to do what we have to do to help each other and protect each other. And I think wearing a mask is a small, small thing to do. So, I, I think we need to just do it a little bit longer.
Okay. Chris and then Clody.
I think part of what makes this an emergency is that we do not know the specifics of this virus. And it is now not only the UK variant and the South African variant, but there are between 10 and 12 new US homegrown COVID-19 variations that have been identified. The part of the genome that mutates most easily in this virus, apparently, is the portion, the genes that control the virulence and how easily transmitted the virus is. Meaning that most of the, the most prevalent mutations are affecting the virus's ability to transmit, to move more easily from person to person, and the severity with which the virus affects an infected person. virus affects an infected person. If we already understood this critter and had it under control, it wouldn't be an emergency. Or even if we knew what we don't know, because we don't have cancer, for example, under control, but we know what we are able to figure out to date, and we make all kinds of decisions based on that. So it doesn't rise to the level of having to have a city ordinance, because first of all, there is nothing simple that anyone can identify that I can do to protect you from getting cancer. In the case of COVID, what I can do to protect you is wear a mask. And what you can do to protect me is wear a mask. So that makes this disease very different, in my mind, than many other very serious diseases that we have among us. In emergency situations, I'm an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, kind of a gal. Simple example is, I believe the fire department, when they tell me that I have way too many junipers on my property, and I take them out, because as unpleasant, as expensive, as much of a pain in the neck as that might be, that ounce of prevention may very well prevent my house from burning to the ground. So in this case, I believe with the school district opening, as I understand it, on March 1st, with ISU continuing to make significant efforts to curtail this virus and get back to normal, with many of our large retailers wanting to begin to increase their sales, and with our small businesses struggling, I believe that this is the time for an ounce of prevention, keeping the mask mandate in place. Because it may, I can't say 100% for sure, but nobody can say 100% otherwise, it may be, and it appears to be, an ounce of prevention that we can apply to prevent a pound of hurt farther down the road. So I am fully in support of keeping the mask mandate in place.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortega.
I just want to say that I'm a less government kind of girl all day long, and, but I have been inundated since our last meeting with emails from healthcare people in this community, begging me, asking me if I completely lost my mind and everything else, and begging for this mask mandate to be extended for, at least until next month, then we revisit it. So I am going to defer, as much as I don't like this type of thing, I'm going to defer to the healthcare professionals, and I am going to vote to keep the mask mandate in place for another month.
Could I just make one more comment? I just wanted to be clear, because you mentioned schools opening and going back to in-person, and I received, you know, as we all did, lots of emails, and I wanted to clarify, because I think there's confusion in the public, that our ordinance is what mandates mask-wearing in schools, and it doesn't. Those two are totally separate. The school district makes their own decision, there's an elected board of trustees, and they make the decision about whether students wear masks or not. So I just wanted to clarify that, because even whether we rescind or don't rescind, it has no impact on kids having to wear masks in school. That is a totally separate thing, and ISU will also make their own separate decision as well. So just to be clear.
As will any private entity.
Yes.
Fred Meyers, Walmart.
Yes.
Small and large businesses, things like that.
And they were requiring them before we passed our ordinance, and they will, if we rescind, most likely continue to require them. So this doesn't automatically get rid of all mask-wearing, just to be clear.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Linda, for that clarification. But I think since this disease exists in the context of a community, you know, that was the intention of my remarks, but thank you for clarifying, that this disease isn't just a single-person disease. This is a disease that lives in the context of a community. And I believe that maintaining the mask ordinance supports whatever decisions ISU, the hospital, et cetera, makes. But I appreciate your clarification. Thank you very much.
Roger.
I just think that being proactive is not being fearful. I think listening and being willing to learn and consider what learned people are telling us is not being fearful, it's being informed. My life was saved because I took a simple precautionary test many years ago, and I listened to what the doctors advised me. My life was saved again because I took another little test, and it showed that I needed a special medication. I don't think it's really inconvenient to preserve lives when there are simple things we can do. And I think this is a simple way that we can do this. And for those that think that this is something that's foisted on people, I know of someone who had four causes of death on their birth, I mean, on their death certificate, very close to our family. Three of the causes listed COVID as the primary cause. Yes, he had an underlying condition, but that condition would not have seized him had it not been for all the interferences that COVID did in decimating his body. Now, I think I'm accountable to that guy, even though he's dead. And I think I'm accountable to several other people I know who have died because of this. I'm accountable to people who get sick. I'm accountable to the three restaurants just down Yellowstone here that I've seen closed during this COVID. And I need to act on behalf of what the greater good is, rather than on the convenience of some people. So that's why I'm strong in advocating for the ordinance to go on.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. Rick? My comment about fear had nothing to do with this council. There is a hysterical fear sweeping this country fueled by mass media, because good news about this virus doesn't sell newspapers, doesn't increase listenership or viewership. But the hysterical fear about something happening in an isolated pocket is being spread across our country. I think we could reinforce and help to calm the nerves of local people if we say enough. If we're waiting for COVID to go away in our community, it could be 2020, it could be 2100. It's never going to go away. It's with us from now on, just like flu, just like rubella and measles and every other disease there is. Diphtheria, tetanus, they exist, and we're going to have this forever. I suspect down the road, we're going to have a vaccine developed. You'll take a flu shot that'll have a COVID component to it, and you'll get an annual booster, just like you do a flu shot now. But it isn't going away. If that's what we're waiting for, we might as well go and all buy several hundred masks, because we're going to be one forever. It's time. It's time to say, we think this thing is declined to the point that we can safely say, with 20 cases in 57,000 people a day, that's not very significant. And I think it's time to say it's enough.
Okay. And with that, Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, repealing ordinance number 3061, which established standards for face coverings for individuals when they are in public places, including penalties for violations, provided an effective date from and after its passage, approval, and publication, according to law.
I declare that the final reading of the ordinance shall the ordinance pass. Wendy, would you please call the roll? You do that again.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
No.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will discuss the mask ordinance again in two weeks, from March 4th is when it will come in front of us again. With that, Agenda Item 13 is items from the audience. There are nobody has signed up for, to speak to the council, so I would like to thank the council for their time today. It wasn't a long day, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.